Good evening. Be at six P M Wednesday, December twentieth. This is the Town of Air zoning board of appeals hybrid meeting agenda. This meeting slash hearing of the zoning board of appeals will be held in person. At the location provided on this notice, members of the public are welcome to attendance meeting in person. Please note that while option for remote attendance and our participation via zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in specific item on this agenda should make plans for in person. Versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on zoom. Public may access proceedings by joining zoom meeting I D eight five seven nine seven two eight seven one seven seven. Or by calling three one two six two six six seven nine nine. For additional information about the remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit. Administrative coordinator at Z B A at air dot M A dot U S. Or nine seven eight seven seven two eight two two zero extension one one four prior to the meeting. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. Uh, there's three of us present. Our fourth is in by zoom. First item on uh next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Make motion to approve agenda.
Second that motion.
All those favors signify by saying aye.
On the other side.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye, approval of agenda. Next item on the agenda is introduction of the new town planner by the town manager. Robert, if you would, please.
Mister Chairman, members of the Z B A, uh, good evening and thank you for the. Opportunity to just address the Z B A just briefly, I know you have applicants on the agenda. I wanted to take um the opportunity to formally and publicly uh introduce to the Z B A our town planner. Uh Mister Danny Ruiz, who started with us back in July. Uh, he comes uh has come to the position with a wealth of knowledge. Uh, he had been the assistant planner in the town of Salisbury before he joined us and he also worked for various. Uh, development uh corporations, the private sector uh before his municipal career and he has. Hit the ground running here in in air and we're happy to have him uh with us, so I wanted to uh introduce him to you. And also uh communicate to the Z B A that um his professional expertise in. Is a resource to the Z B A, just as it is to the um planning board. Uh, we want to make sure that to the extent possible, all of our boards and committees um have the professional uh support that they need. Um, that we appreciate everything the Z B A does, everybody's volunteers, nobody knows everything, especially me. Um, so having somebody um, you know, with his background in planning and land use and Z B A on. On any applications that there may be, you know, questions on um if any meetings with. Um, you know, hot button issues or so forth, and he's willing um to be in attendance to answer any questions, to provide any support. Um, he also is responsible for his professional duties of convening the um. The land use group of the town department head, so the uh he's. A wealth of information, his office is on on the third floor. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce him uh to the Z B A and. And likewise, and if the Z B A had any questions or through you, Mister Chair of Danny, if you wanted to maybe speak a little bit about. What you have to offer.
Yeah, um, so I, you know, as Robert stated, I did prior, prior to coming to air, I worked in Salisbury. I was an assistant planner there for about a year. And then prior to that, I was a project manager for a real estate developer for seven years. Um, I have uh, I've worked in many towns across Massachusetts, act in Maynard. Uh framing hand Natick, um, I've worked in Lancaster. I've worked in a lot of different towns, South Borough, West Borough, so um I have a. Pretty good uh knowledge of how different boards work and working in different towns and how different towns function. Um, also just kind of the process of planning and. Applications for, you know, zoning boards, planning boards, conservation, I've worked in, I've been in front of a lot of different boards. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm here just to try to help the board and um assist you with anything I can.
That was the only question I had, when you were in Salisbury, did you interface with the Z B A there?
Um, so I did uh assist the Z B A in a couple of occasions over there, um, very minor. Uh, because typically over in Salisbury, the uh C B A was uh managed by the building inspector over there. Um, but prior to that, I'd worked with uh quite a few Z B A boards um uh for some various projects. Forty Bs comprehensive permits, um, variances.
Where were you a year ago?
Yeah, well, he he's here, Mister Chairman, to absorb any bullets for the Z B A too, right?
Yes, I think, yes.
But it's so, you know, as as we move forward, one of my goals um is to to the extent we can is make sure that. All of our boards and committees are uh staffed professionally and supported um professionally. And I know Samantha does an excellent job on for the Z B A on the administrative end of things, so. Um, I I just thought it was, it was important um to to come to the meeting to introduce Danny. Um, and would like the Z B A uh don't be to not hesitate to use him, you know, as a resource. He um is willing to uh come to any meetings that are needed, he's also willing to meet with anybody, his office is on the third floor. In advance of meetings uh with members or or through the chair about any applications or so forth. Um, I think you do that uh with the planning board now, yeah.
Yeah, I meet with the planning board, um, so the chair and the vice chair. I typically have a meeting on Monday, we'll meet before we meet on Tuesday, just to kind of go through. The applications, get more into details with that, with the information that's kind of happened between meetings. Just so that the vice chair and the chair are informed on everything that's been going on. That way, when they come to the meeting, they can be a little bit more of assistance to the other members as well.
This particular board function has a little bit of a different forte. We pick up the pieces from the planning board or from the billing inspector. And try to make a conscious decision on what will be best for either the applicant or the town as it goes along, so. The point is that when you get your um, when Samantha circulates. The notices throughout for our our applicants. I'd like a, you need to be. As detailed as as you can in your response, if there's an issue. Put it up front for us and we'll decide right then. We should, if you should come before us and to speak with us, or if it's something that's a non-issue. Because we might think it's an issue and in reality it's not. So, that's all I'd ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see you match me a bit.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Ron?
Open the door.
Thank you.
Jess?
I agree with what Sam said, so.
Thank you, welcome aboard, we look forward to working with you.
I appreciate it, I look forward to working with you guys too.
Alright, Mister Chairman, thank you as always for the time and to all the members of the Z B A, thank you for all you do and. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
Next item on the agenda, continued public hearing. Application for special permit north country developer seventy one Sandy Pond Road. Remember, we have a representative?
No, they sent to me.
And it said?
Um, they would like to continue until the next. Meeting because um, yeah.
They want a full board because of Florida.
Yeah, they want a full board because they.
They need four to four out of five, that's right.
So they would like to continue.
Yeah?
Very wise this evening.
Yeah, I believe it is. Alright, um, we need to take a vote on that, don't we? To continue. I made a motion, we continue the public hearing till the next scheduled Z B A meeting. Uh, that will be.
February seventeenth.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor, turn on the side, want to put one?
Jessica Gino, aye.
Thank you, Sam Goodwin, aye, we continue that one. Next item on the agenda. Public hearing, application for special permit Alexandria Goldenak, did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Um. I'm gonna offer you the same option.
You have to.
You have to, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Air's Z B A will be conducting a hybrid public hearing at six eleven P M Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty. Three air town hall, one main street. Regarding application submitted by Alexandria Goldenak for the property located at forty two Park Street, air mass. Applicant is seeking a special permit pursuant to air zoning bylaws, section seven point three point B. To allow for the construction in the front. Setback. For more information, call, including zoom call in information, please contact. D B A at air dot M A dot U S or nine seven eight seven seven two eight two two zero extension one one four. Advertised December first, twenty twenty three and December eighth, twenty twenty three to Chuba Valley Voice. Okay, we've opened the hearing now. We're gonna offer you the same choice. You wanna go forward or do you wanna hold for a full board, because you need four out of five?
Yep, so just for the record, Justin McClair, McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. At this time, we would request a continuance to the January seventeenth meeting for the same reasons previously stated.
Absolutely. I make a motion, we continue the uh public hearing. For forty two Park Street air mass until January seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All the favors signify by saying aye.
John on the side, one of the two lines.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Thank you, sir, we will see you on the seventeenth.
Sounds good. Merry Christmas, happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, discussion habitat for humanity, is there an update?
I listed uh, because we discussed it last meeting, it was in the minutes, uh, at an update, these. Uh, zoning bylaws were reassessed by Charlie. Uh, and it was determined that they do not, they're not required to have commercial on the first floor, so they can have. A one or two family home, so they're gonna pursue it that way, they may come before us if they need a variance, but they won't need anything for that, which was the original concern.
Is that what you thought, is that what you saw?
So they don't have to come before the board?
No, no.
Not for their original concern.
Originally, they thought they had to have a business on the first floor because it's a downtown business district, but.
Because it's some unconforming law.
Well, we haven't got there, we didn't get there.
Alright, so what would be the next?
They're, they're going to pursue and and look into what their options are, but. They might not see them.
Except them and see.
The only, the only thing they were coming to us for to begin with was. They thought they had to have a business on the first floor because of downtown business, but in reality, they didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
So if they have to come forward for size constraints or setbacks, then that's a different story.
Correct, okay, so that's a possibility.
We have no information at this time on that, so.
Alright.
Don't have a big.
Right, it's solved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from November fifteenth. Did you look? I read it though.
Make a motion to approve.
Up, 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 up.
Oh, 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 I didn't see you waving your hand.
There I am.
Alright.
Um, I just, just for accuracy on uh. Oh, one of the pages, it's on the um Grove, the Grove Pond Third Street application. Um, I think it's page two, uh, the paragraph that begins, uh, Mike Gibbons noted. And then it just goes on to say, uh, Kevin, Mister Conover explained. Um, that they only intend to uh. Develop the two lots, just like to add the phrase at this time. Cause that's, as I recall exactly what he said, that there were no plans to develop that third parcel.
That's correct.
At this time, and I think I'd just like to have that in the record.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the meeting as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
John on the other side. Come on, aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, um, board discussion, do we wanna have the discussion now or do you want to wait for Mike to come back? About the rules, our rules and regulations. I can go either way. We have a draft.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what he's looked at it and done anything, so I, I'm moving to put it to January seventeenth.
I don't think there will be too much of a discussion, pretty much, I I did have a point.
Oh, your point.
On the um. The uh. The um. The rules, I suppose, regarding it, the rules, the.
Oh, the order, sequence of order, procedural?
Yes, yes. I, should we wait for that as also?
Well, her, Samantha and I were talking about that earlier, I mean, there was a couple, couple little things that I looked at. According to what I read in state law were worded a little differently, so I questioned that. Um, like in here, it says, for example, uh, the board shall reorganize itself annually after board member appointments. During the first regular scheduled meeting of the fiscal year. That's not what the state law says, the state law says. You'll elect a chair, a new chairman every year. So there's a difference in terminology. I don't know if it, uh, like I told earlier on, I didn't know that it's. If that, if it's distinctive, if it matters, I mean, when you say you reorganize, I read that as. You get a new clerk, you get a new vice chair, you get a new chair, that's a reorganization. Now theoretically, we can keep the same board we've had all along, or change it however we wish to do that.
But your, your question whether or not we're mandated to change the chair annually.
And the rest, well, according to this, it says, it says shall reorganize annually, there's no may. So.
Well, that's true, but but that's not the part of your question.
The part of questioning is, do you have to change the whole structure or just chairman? The state law says chairman, yes, sir?
I I can actually uh give some insight on this.
Please.
You were right. Yes, um, so you are correct, there, there is the the statement where it says um uh about the chairman in the state law, but. There are other towns, most, most towns have a uh section in their bylaws on rearrangement. And it doesn't necessarily mean you have to change, it means that.
If you, if it says shall.
So maybe, maybe it's the wording on that, maybe it's um. The way it works is when you do uh, when you come in for that uh rearrangement, what do we, what do we call it?
Reorganization.
Reorganization. Typically, what happens is at that point, the board just votes to who they want for the chair, vice chair and clerk. And it does, it doesn't matter that the, if if you're the chair. And um someone else votes to put you as chair again, that's okay. But what it does is it opens up the opportunity for other people to be able to put votes in for other people if they want to. Um, it just gives the opportunity for a change if there's necessary. Um, and if the board wants to remain the same way, they can as well.
Well, that's, that's existed from day one, we've, we've always been open. You know, we've had this discussion a couple times. Prior to, prior to you coming with us. You know, we thought, well, do you wanna change it, do we wanna do this, or do we wanna do that? And it's a general consensus of the board of what they want to do, so I, I don't, I don't think. I think that we need to be changed from shall to may. Because it doesn't agree with the state law to begin with. So if we're going off on our own, go the way we wanna go. Shall we reorganize or may we reorganize?
And that is, that is up to you guys, hon, on the wording as you want, so.
I understand it's semantics, but in my world, when somebody says you shall, you damn well do it, you know?
Yeah. And and so, and just so that you, and having this put in there in the, in the year rules and regulation just. Makes it so that every year that discussion occurs. That's all that, it's.
It does occur, believe it or not.
And and that's, and I'm just, that's all I'm just stating is, and that's why it's being put in there. It's just sort of, it ensures, and that's, that's something that I'm, I'm also looking at for the planning board as well, so. It's not something that is strictly only on the zoning board, it's something that most towns have been going to just to make sure that it um. It's not so that everything doesn't stay the exact same for a long period of time.
Unless.
If it's not broke, why are you trying to fix it?
So, in 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 my experience, the reason that it it does occur is uh. And nothing specific to any board members here. Um, typically what happens is there's board, uh, there's sometimes what happens is. You'll see a chair that's been in place for fifteen years and there hasn't been enough reorganization. Uh, new eyes on certain, on the way uh the town is being looked at and um. The way we're progressing air, most towns, eventually you want new eyes on things and the way. Meetings are run, you just want. V- variety is is typically why you're seeing this being put in a lot of different towns now.
So you're saying there should be an opportunity to do that?
Yes.
There is. Like, or, or what should be stated, in an annual basis?
Well, it is.
Well, should consider, so.
We've had it, I don't know how many times we've had this discussion, we've had it.
No, I know, but for the purpose of putting it in the rules, what language you wanna use there, I'm not saying we haven't done that.
Yeah.
But uh, you know. But now there's.
So do you think, you think we should leave it like it is?
It says, again, it says shall. What is, I'm sorry.
The board shall reorganize itself annually, that's.
Shall reorganize.
And that tells me there's a new clerk, there's a new assistant and a new chair.
Does.
Yeah, that's what it says to me.
Shall reconsider this or or shall vote to.
So a vote does need to take every year for a chair, so no matter what.
Yes, that's correct.
So if Sam stays in another year.
That's fine.
But it's, but we're not reorganizing.
So it's, the reorganization is the opportunity, so. What happens every year is, so Sam, you're the chair to this year, right? Next year, when it comes around, everyone, we have, we come to that meeting. Someone will make a vote for the chair. And it's, say it's you, again, that's still being, we're still taking the vote on reorganization.
But we're not, we're not reorganizing.
Yeah, and I, and I understand the the, what you're saying, but. Taking the vote, and maybe the the wording on this section just needs to be uh slightly changed and I can work with Sam on this.
Okay, because we're not really reorganizing, I mean, if you. Like Mike's been, I've been chair for I don't know how many years, Mike's been vice chair for I don't know how many years. You've been clerk for I don't know how many years, yeah, um. If some, if somebody else wants to do it, we talk about it amongst ourselves, we discuss it, we don't wait until. I mean, Carly used to remind us every now and then, you guys need to.
So, that's right, she told us when it was time, we've done it every year.
Yeah.
So.
But it's not, it wasn't a true reorganization, we didn't play musical chairs.
But the fact that you opened it up and and did it, that is. Yeah, it was on the table, so that's reorganization.
That constitutes, in my head, reorganization is three different people. That's the entire staff.
And and I, I can understand why you interpret it that way, but in in practice, that's not how it is.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity to consider the, the, the officers of the board.
Correct.
You know, it doesn't mean it's, it triggers a reorganization.
So what if we change it to?
It's, I'm just saying, yeah, change it.
So what if we change it to the board shall annually vote after board member appointments. For the officers of the board.
There you go.
Works for me, so.
Works for me, then. So in the case we wanna remain the same, we, we, we accept nominations or whatever, you know? Everybody dominates Sam. You got it.
The other thing that Samantha and I talked about was exactly what you said. We were looking at the um. How, how the sequence of events or their business.
Yes.
I looked at that the way she did it, I like it a whole lot better.
Yeah, I I do have a, I do have, should we bring it up now?
Now.
I mean, it's.
Absolutely.
It's me running thing, I, we're gonna, we're gonna have a.
Thank you.
I, I think um. Um, in the um. The latter, so section four E. G.
Four E G, okay?
Alright, so I think deliberation is worthy of a, of a separate line and should be, should be recognized, now we can, we could. Both, you know, or or the chairman could ask, is there any further deliberation on this thing, you know? Maybe we should have deliberations, we have little chance to talk among them.
No, no, we do every, every hearing we have. We deliberate, I ask each and every one of you.
I'm just saying it should be codified here, and in some, I, there is, it is mentioned there, but I think it needs a.
I thought it was mentioned after. Um, the public.
After public input.
Yes. Or after, after the applicant's rebuttal to the public input. That's when we do the, that's when we do the deliberation, and I thought that was put in here.
It is.
It is.
The chair will close here on public comment to allow.
More deliberation.
Alright, so that implies that deliberation does have a place here and it will be, you know, will be considered.
At, after, after public comments.
If you don't have any.
No.
About that, that's.
No, I'm, I'm good with it, because we were doing a little different.
Yeah.
Because we were listening to the presentation, take public comments, and then we would talk about it. The, it, the rebuttal itself turned into a he said, she said, and then it, it, every once in a while, running a ditch.
And 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 there was also the issue that we couldn't get through the public input without. Comment and participation of the applicant's representation.
True.
And that was a problem.
True.
Yes, indeed.
And that's why when I, when I put this together that way, that's the way that I, I wrote that.
At some point, their case rests, we can't.
Well, what do you have?
Cards flying constantly, I mean.
No, I think, and I think, I think it's worked out right. The close, the com, after comments are closed, then we'll deliberate, I mean, I listen to both sides of it.
Yeah. Yes, and then the board, and right, the deliberations amongst the members of the board, what do you think, you know, with uh this. This sort of thing, or uh, you know, I deal with this way, or you deal with that way, you know, and then. And then we have a vote to cement however we, the board is.
So what we do is when the public has their comments.
Yeah.
Then the applicant has a rebut.
Right.
And then the chair says. Public input is closed, and we're going to, going to deliberation.
Yep.
Okay.
That worked for you, Jess?
Yeah, I just, I just had one thing occur to me, um, does this. Close comments, but then allow for board deliberation and then write to a motion? Does that allow for those cases where. Um, an application looks like it's going to get denied the way it's written and. We make the offer, if you want to withdraw without prejudice, you can do it here?
In the deliberation.
Yeah.
In the deliberation, okay.
Yeah, that's where you would.
Okay.
Do you really wanna do this?
Well, basically, that's the way that it's, it needs to be run, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, sir?
Yes, so I would just make one point that um, when you're doing deliberation and and in the occasion which Jess talked about and. Affording the applicant the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice, we just have to make sure that you haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Oh, yeah, that's absolutely.
Okay.
That's one of the last things we'll do.
We do our vote before the hearing is closed, I know that, like, when you have your meetings. You close the hearing and then you have further discussion and take a vote.
We don't do that.
Our vote is taken before the closing.
Last thing we do is close the hearing.
Okay. Alright, and and so, I mean, that's, that, everyone has a different, you can have your different process, I just wanted to make sure that.
No, we do. Was there anything else you wanna talk about? Was there anything else you want to talk about?
Um. Well, do, we have a slot for just general discussion, I mean, we've already take, are we finished with the discussion?
I, yeah, but I would like it on the agenda for next month as well, so Mike can have his input, I don't want to.
Okay.
I don't want her to get it all typed up and distributed in Mr. Rebo. Fair enough, so we're keeping it.
And we agree then it will remain open, we.
Correct.
Whatever.
Sure, I have no problem at all, what do you think, Jess?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. We can.
I don't want to bother you, but I do have a real experience that I like, I didn't realize this discussion was coming up, but it just helps. This has to do with with how boards of appeals run their their hearings, so my experience is mostly an and over lately, the before I retired. And one of the things that impressed me up there is they were fortunate enough to have seven people on the Board of Appeals, so they actually assigned five to each case and then. Spares, and we don't have that luxury either. But the chairman of the Board of Appeals, every time we went to a meeting, had a typewritten sheet. Right in front of her, and she opened the meeting by reading the typewritten sheet, which and which told the the public how the order was going to be. For instance, this is how it's gonna go. We're gonna hear from the applicant, we're gonna hear from the board, we're gonna hear from the audience, we're gonna listen to the attorney. Whatever the, so that she actually read it off at every meeting, like seven different items. And once she she had that, as someone sitting in the audience was a no brainer, you just knew you had to wait and be calm. But your time was coming, so that's just my suggestion and. We're trying to do, I I'm not saying we're doing it exactly that way at the planning board, but we are trying to let people know at the beginning of the meeting that public input will come. You know, be patient and so forth, but I found it to be very helpful.
Thank you, usually we uh. Our audience is somewhat selective, I mean, we we don't, it's, I can remember just a few occasions on. Where we've had a large audience and we had to really lay out how we were gonna do it.
Right, but it it, sometimes it keeps people who are anxious from, you know, jumping out like me.
Thank you. Um, yeah, let's, let's. Continue this discussion.
Yeah, I just want to leave it open, because. You know, Mike may have been working on it, he may want to stop and rather than have you go through the process.
That's funny.
Let's get to the final.
Did you look at the hearing application, she did?
Yes, I did, but you know, most of that is administrative stuff.
Yep.
And so I'm. I have, I really didn't change much from the existing one we have.
It's clarified and and. Sequence everything a lot better than.
That's true, that's true, it was cleaned up a lot. So, I mean, as far as the board itself, we don't really get involved in this too much.
No. But we do in in some aspects, because it's what we get as a result of this.
Well, that's true.
So.
But yeah, I I've read through it, I I didn't find anything that.
Nothing that rattled, I I think, I think it's good, I think you did a nice job on it.
I do too.
As far as I'm concerned, you should put it in effect.
Well, um I was hoping the board would vote to say this was fine and I'll change it out with the old one.
Okay, but we're we're gonna, we continue this discussion.
We continue the discussion on the rules and procedures.
Well, this is, yeah.
Do you think you want, you want to hold off on the, on the?
No, why don't we do?
The application as well?
Unless it's some urgency to get it.
To my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Is there?
We'll take one vote.
Okay.
When we do the other ones, then we'll vote on this.
Fair enough. Okay.
One more chance to, for Jess to do this, her laser focus on every, every dot and tittle there. Hurt the editor in chief. Wow. Wow.
I I do have a few misplaced, a few periods or non-periods to, I'll I'll just send those to Sam separate.
I was gonna say, if you pick email though, it would be really cool, and I'll just edit that part.
Alright, uh, looks like our next regular scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January seventeen, twenty twenty four, here at six P M.
Um before you adjourn, I just wanted to make sure I did email you guys out the list of all the meeting dates that are coming here, did you all get that?
So.
I don't know, when did you do that?
I didn't either.
I just wanted to make sure you have it.
It'll it'll be.
Every Thursday, um I also included the deadlines I have for all the applications, so by that date, I will be able to tell you. If we will have a meeting.
Yeah, I found that real helpful when you sent it, when you did the notice and you copied this, that was very helpful.
So I would be able to, um, those are the deadlines I have. Um if you'll note, there is no meeting in June at this time because it's off on holiday.
On holidays?
Juneteenth.
What?
Juneteenth, June nineteenth is a holiday, we will not be open.
I should have stayed working, there's more holidays now.
You're right.
I wanted to make sure you all have that.
I don't see it.
I said, I emailed it at a different time.
I got your.
Special permit asked. C P P C. Meeting number twenty. Thank you. Alright, um, anything else?
Yes, what? Just, should, don't we have a less, less, the, what do we call it? On our, it changes us?
What?
We have, don't we have a? General discussion or do we not?
We did that.
That, well, we.
Okay. What discussion?
All I wanted to say.
Oh, you have something you want to talk about this?
Okay. Briefly, I promise you.
Alright.
Alright, alright, I um, I was just curious. You know, obviously I've been, I've been reluctant to. For dense zoning this time or dense developments even to. You know, wisely, the the person pulled out for this, asking for the two family. But did you know that air was the of of? Two hundred and, over two hundred cities and towns in Massachusetts, air is. It's only number sixty on the development of the of the density. Residents per square mile, we have very small. Have some of the smallest, uh the smallest area of any town in Massachusetts. Um and we're right up there, we're ahead of. We're ahead of even uh Pittsburgh and Leamester, I believe.
Really?
Huge towns, and just an idea that, you know, that we're. Already pretty densely populated as it is and. I had to, I had to laugh at our, or just see the irony of being in the monsoon. And stopping at the stop sign and seeing the, the uh, the big notice, you know, about water restrictions. You know, which is partly because I know the plant needs to, you know, there's plenty of water there, but the plant can only process so much for the residents, so. So I, I mean. I I think we should always consider, uh, you know.
You think we're approaching build up? You think we're approaching build up?
We have been for years.
Yeah.
We were the top of the Boston Globes list several years ago.
Were we really?
Yeah. Can I add too, I've I've also like, Ron, I guess, been thinking about this a lot in the past month and um. I've been looking up population densities for air and all the towns around us. And not only do we have the smallest land area, but we are eight eighty. Uh, population per square mile, and there's no other town around us that has that. Um, and the state average for the whole Commonwealth is eight ninety, eight ninety one. So we're right at the state average, and while I know that the state needs housing. I just feel like air's, air's up there, it's, and I don't really want to. At the moment, increase that density too much either, especially like Ron said with the water issues until that filtering.
Given any, have you given any thought to why?
Why what?
Why, why do you think air is so, air is so popular? I'll tell you why, I think.
Yeah.
I think the town is financially stable, I think it's very well run. I think it's, it has more than other surrounding towns has to offer, that's why people are coming here.
Yeah.
That's.
That's the.
Look at, look at our neighbors.
That's the motivation, but but it's still, the the density is. Because of how much we're squishing into too small area. The town.
Somebody along, somebody along the lines decided that, okay, you can build a house on this much land. We didn't do that.
That's true.
Somebody else did that and said, okay, so if you have, for argument's sake. Five thousand building lots, then technically you could put five thousand houses in a town, which doesn't make sense. Because it just increases the population density. We have to have open space, we do have open space that we're not going to allow to be built on.
I don't think this board is much of a factor in that.
That is correct.
Because all these, all these, all these housing developments, they will come, so.
Did you know the one down on West Main Street fell apart?
Well, I assumed it did, because I've been waiting for the other hearing.
I heard it, I heard it back now. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good thing you came into there.
Stay there.
They they actually withdrew um from uh the planning board without prejudice on October twenty.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because when I, I came to a couple of the meetings that it was on, and every time I threw in it, got postponed.
Yeah, they, we were dealing with, there was a couple of issues that we were kind of trying to work through, um and it came to the point where. There was, we were, we we kind of got to the fun, the end of it where. We just couldn't get through those barriers, so uh they had to withdraw without prejudice.
Like what?
Uh, the seven hundred and fifty square foot uh minimum that we have in our bylaw. So that's, that was quite, that's, that was the biggest uh feat that they had to kind of get past, and we just. There was no way we could find a way to kind of get around that, there were no ways to kind of waive it. Um, right, the it it was just, that seven fifties in our bylaw and it's, it 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 governs.
I saw other things that they couldn't be.
I agree, there were, there were plenty of them, but that was the first one, so i- if you can't get past building a unit that meets. The 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 unit size requirement in our bylaw, then the rest is moved.
Yeah, true.
So that's why it it kind of got to that point.
Good, I agree with all the paperwork I got in hand.
So what do you, what do you suggest and we, there's. It's.
Do you, do you go back to density now?
Yeah.
The only thing.
We, we, sorry, we.
That we have to do with that is like, like when Ron says, when we're giving somebody a a special permit for. Two-family house, whatever, that's the only density that we really affect.
That's true, but if you look at the other side of the coin. We have to look at what these people want to do, I mean. They want to put a two-family house on their, on their land. And by what right do we have to say no because it's going to increase population density? We have plenty of methodology to work with, with the client. With with a an applicant, but but still in all.
That's that's something we have to consider, we're looking, they're asking for for a a special permit to do something. And let's say in a zoning like these two-family houses where one, they're, they're, it's only allowed by special permits. Um, there's, there's no obligation to give it to them.
There's, and there, there's no obligation for the the board to vote in favor of it.
Yeah.
Right, it's your individual, like we had this conversation with attorney Givens a year ago. Why didn't we allow the one applicant over on Sandy Pond Road? Because we didn't feel it would fit, it was, it was. Not, there was nothing cast in stone, it was a perception.
Last month, we did the same thing.
Yeah. So there there's, there's no difference there, really.
I I thought, um, sorry, sorry Danny. I thought uh Sa- what Sam included in our packets uh this month. With the cheat sheets for variances and special permits was was really useful in terms of. Highlighting that we do need to consider, what is, what is the, even for special permits, what's the benefit to the town? And what are, what are the pros and cons from the town's point of view?
That's on the back, the back pages of her draft.
Yeah. So thank you, Sam, on that.
Yeah, that's under section three point four, I believe. That's, uh, because that's what I was actually gonna, when she actually spoke about that, that uh Sam and I had talked about. You know, create that cheat sheet with all the special permit on the criteria that you guys have to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you guys are looking at the special permit, and you guys are correct, special permits are discretionary, so. You're not obligated to give it to them, but you also have to make sure that when you go through that criteria that are set um set in our bylaw. That there is a justification for each one of them as to, yes, there's a benefit. Or no, there's a negative impact, and does the ben, do the benefits outweigh the negative impacts on? The uh, on the neighborhood and all the other six sections that are within it.
That's true, so with the benefits are all, you know, so naturally a person wants to do a two-family house when they can. You know, because there's more benefits of them, but what's the benefit for the town?
So.
You know, so, so.
Counterargument to to the benefit, what a benefit to the town would be is adding more inventory. Uh typically, and typically, adding more inventory always helps lead to more affordability, because with less, less inventory that you have in town. The higher your prices are in town, which is why, as you see. Most towns right now that haven't really been building, their inventory is still the same and their prices are skyrocketing. Because people want to get into those towns, not enough housing, and the more inventory you provide, kind of dampens that. Skyrocketing price of the single median households and affordability, it helps kind of bring it down.
Yeah, just the, the counterargument to that still for me goes back to. Um, average numbers of population density when you compare air to all of its surrounding towns. Um, yes, the state does have a real need for more affordable housing, but um, I I just feel. Air has been going in there.
And and I understand where you're coming from on that, but when you look at it, that's, that's not something we. When you're looking at the special permit criteria that you're, you you have to look at. As to, as part of that, and and I understand that's something that you're, you're, you are worried about, and I I do. But that's not something that the board. You can use that as part of your uh, your determination for yourself, but as the board cannot use that as a determination as to why they voted no.
Right.
Or why they vote yes.
Correct.
And I am going to actually start including these every time we have a special permit, I will make sure you have a copy of this checklist. And with this checklist, this is how I will be able to write good findings for the decisions. And that are very clear, so I'm gonna actually start doing this going forward, we can shuffle it a little, for a special permit, these six. I pulled directly from the zoning bylaws, so. This is what we're supposed to. So. And the same for variances, and I matched these questions for both these cheat sheets with what's in the application. So you should be able to match up the two parts with, did they answer it? And do you agree or like or dislike the answer?
Very good. Ken, did you want to say something? You want to add something? This is not the planning board, buddy.
The question of density, if you don't mind, I'd like to have a moment to comment on that.
Yeah, have a seat.
What's going on in the town right now? There's a chance that some members of the board are isolated from what other boards are talking about, or have just not, may not be informed about the discussion that's going on on the boards. There's a lot of talk about density in other boards.
That's absolutely correct, we are isolated from that.
Well, I would recommend that you not be isolated from that. Um, and I'll tell you the reason why, I mean, the zoning changes that have been made in the last several years. Including the farm-based code downtown and the farm-based code on West Main Street, all are, are all about density. The the MBTA community's requirement, that the town of Air may be the only municipality in the state currently. That is ahead of the game and compliant with that, is because we put those form-based codes in effect. So there are requirements that are coming down on the affordability side from the state, their mandates. That we need to have sections of town that allow extra density to comply with the fact that we have. A distance requirement from the rail station to have that kind of accommodation, and we do. So by having form-based codes and allowing density, we comply with other state. So by having form-based codes and allowing density, we comply with other state regulations. On top of that, we qualify for umpteen different kinds of grants because of our requirement and our ability to fall in place with those things. Those grants could ta- talk about things like improvements to the streets under a program called Complete Streets, where every single application, if you talk to the Economic Development Group, will tell you that they are always looking for a zoning, uh, excuse me, a housing component that consists of dense zoning and dense housing. That's part of the application. So as these are reviewed by the state, air always lands in the right spot for these number of different grants for any number of different kinds of projects that we've seen constructed. But more importantly, there are two other committees in town. If, if, well, there's actually three. We have an Affordable Housing Trust, which is a board, a trust, that emphasizes the importance of density and provides, you know, funding for apartments and people who live in dense situations. The Affordable Housing Committee, who strives, if I can figure out ways to change the zoning to implement more density, because that's, again, a, a way to get more affordable units in town. And of course, the planning board, who is, ultimately, all the stuff ends up there and has to go through a vote in the planning board for zoning changes. But I can tell you right now that there's many people in town and other committees that are trying to figure out an answer to the affordable housing crisis. And despite what Jess says, the town of Air only has nine six point six, you know, mu- square miles to, as a denominator, a numerator, whatever you want to call it on those calculations, so we're always going to come out really dense. But in the, the end of the day, we still do have a lot of open space. It's underutilized in the town. We have plenty of places to walk and stuff like that. Um, so I'm just emphasizing the fact that there are other boards that are going to be contradictory to what you guys are thinking, because they're, they're trying to figure out a way to get more density, and, you know, that's.
That, that's all true, but the applications for these multiple houses coming before us are not affordable housing.
Right.
It's, that's, that's, the, the definition of affordable is really, really complicated, but the, what we're being told as an affordable housing group, with what they're telling us falls in line with Danny. What Danny says, it's not just a question of necessarily the cost, but it's diversity in the housing, the size of the housing, and a broad base of housing rather than all single-family standalone houses on bigger lots. So the more inventory you have in different groups, you end up with a wider potential for price range that, that fits. Um, you guys want, and I never did have a chance to thank this board for approving a forty B, like, you know, on, um, Pittsburgh Road, which was a huge accomplishment for the town. And so that's kind of the goal, is to fit something like that maybe on West Main Street, but not of the size that they were looking for, you know, that, that they pulled out of, uh, and those kinds of things. So these different zones, in, in your case, the two-family question is more, um, I guess it's a personal decision by, by this board, but as you're well aware, it's double the size of the standards in that zone. You know, the typical required lot in that zone, A two, is twelve thousand. They have, they have twenty-four thousand to put a two-family on the lot. So in essence, the zoning already says, you got to have twice as much land to put a two-family on the si- on the lot. Um, and then it's up to you guys to decide if that special permit, you know, fits in or not, but the, the whole concept of the affordable housing, what, what I'm being told on that board is that it's a diversity as well as a price. The more diversity you have, the chances are that you'll fit, you know, into different, uh, different categories of affordability. And not necessarily the perfect affordable spot, because we're never going, it's, it's moving up. But in the case of the two-family, if, if a two-family were to have a two-bedroom on each side rather than a three or four-bedroom on each side, that's more of an affordable situation. A two-bedroom unit is, is going to be either rented for less than a three or four.
Absolutely.
So forth. So that's kind of the, part of the concept, um, to get more diversity, and as far as the planning board is going, we only have, I think, one application that's coming up in front of us, and it's at Mr. Geno's neighborhood, uh, Stratton Hill, which is going to be potentially all two-families now. I don't know if you gentlemen heard that story or not.
No.
So that's going to be fascinating twist.
Yes, but could I, could I just say on that, Ken, that what would go, I mean, we're not going to have anything to say about that on the zoning board, but the, all the duplexes or perhaps even some triplexes on there are balanced out by contribution of over hundred thirty acres of conservation. There's a tax benefit there that's very clear.
Correct, exactly. But I was going to, I was going to mention to this board the, why they don't have the input on the two families, because I think that's the first thing that probably came to everybody's mind. Why wouldn't we have the input on the two families? Well, it turns out that under the OSRD section of the zoning, which this would be, it's a massive open states project where they're going to donate a lot of land to the town and consolidate density-wise in a smaller footprint. So that's kind of what we're, we're talking about, is how do we save open space and get density in a smaller footprint on a loop road? So seventeen two-families on a tinier footprint. It turns out, under the OSRD, there's a provision for special permits that's controlled by the planning board. So the special permit can be issued on the, by the planning board, as it was down on Shaker Mill Pond as well, where we put in two families over there, like six two-families. So there are some provisions that allow the special permit to be given by the planning board if it falls under an open space development, which saves fifty percent or more of the land. So there, there are some still twists and turns in it, but, uh, so anyway.
None of us are arguing with that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I had on density from the affordable housing angle. Thank you.
John, hey, do you want to? Ron?
All set.
Jess?
I'm all set.
All right. We will uh, see you on Wednesday, January seventeenth. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
What's that?
Jess, aye.
Jess, aye.
And go aye. Thank you much. See you in this, uh, January.